You know, the song says, if you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. And that's true. And when we get back to the day in Jackson Heights, Elmhurst and New York City, where we can be out in the streets, talking to each other, we will have gotten through this COVID crisis together and we will unite again as a community.
We're here today with New York City Councilman Daniel Drum, who represents the 25th Council District in Queens. He is also the Chair of the Finance Committee in the Council. Councilmember, how are you doing today?
I'm hanging in there, you know, it's been rough. But I thank God for, you know, being okay and healthy.
Personally, how are you dealing with the crisis?
Well, you know, I represent, as you said, the 25th Council District, Jackson Heights and Elmhurst. So we're really the epicenter of the epicenter of the virus. And it's been tough. I've lost at least 10 friends at this point and probably two dozen or more constituents. And, you know, so that's taken its toll. You know, it's been difficult for me because I live alone and I have to stay in and I don't really get an opportunity to see or talk with friends too much, you know. That's been hard. But I'm grateful because I know that a lot of the people that I represent in the district don't even have what I have. So, you know, the only place that they can go for medical care is Elmhurst Hospital, you know, and they have to line up on the street outside the hospital to get the care. They have no place to convalesce. You know, they go back to overcrowded illegally converted apartments. And, you know, they just can't have any, you know, place like I have to go where they can be, where there's nobody else that has the virus. They can't socially isolate, you know. So, you know, in one sense, I feel lucky. But on the other hand, I feel the pressure from the virus. You know, because I've had personal losses. So it's a mixed feeling. It's a mixed feeling, to be honest.
How would you describe your district, the demographics?
Sure, so my district is about 40% Latino, 40% Asian and 20% Other. And we have every country in the world represented in Jackson Heights. We are fond of saying that there's probably 167 different languages spoken here. And I bet you that there's at least one person from every country in the world living in Jackson Heights. So it's probably the most diverse district, I think, in the New York City Council. Really, really diversity. So we have every Latin American country represented, the Caribbean represented. We have all the countries of Asia and South Asia represented here. And it's a really unusual and incredible place to be. So, but that being said, most of the people that are here, they're 68% probably, about are immigrants. And immigrants oftentimes struggle. And then when you talk about undocumented immigrants, you're talking about a whole nother type of struggle. So we have some poverty, we have the overcrowding conditions, we have the lack of health care. And all of these things, I think, have become more and more apparent with this virus because those things were there, but now they've become glaringly visible to us. And we can see them more than we could see them in the past because the virus has brought these things out. So it's an incredible district to be able to represent. But, you know, we deal with all of these issues.
In a time like this, walk me through a day for you and your community.
Sure, so, you know, I get up every morning about six o'clock, have my coffee, my breakfast, go and check my emails and start to get ready for the day. Every morning at about 10 o'clock, I have a conference call or a Zoom conference with my staff to check in on what happened the day before or what's coming up during the day. And I have seven staff members that I have out of my district office. I have other staff members downtown at City Hall, but they're more hired directly by the Speaker than directly by me. And so we go over the issues that my employees have had during the day before or ways that we can help those constituents, how we can connect them to resources, you know, what issues, what problems they had. Right now, the big problem's food, by the way. And then we go about our day. So I've done, you know, a number of interviews, at least an interview a day with major news organizations since the crisis began. And also checking my emails, trying to get people those resources, just like my staff does also. And then, you know, we will have city council meetings also, where we check in with the Speaker or budget negotiating team meetings because I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee in the City Council and we have to come up with a budget as well. You know, video conferences with Commissioners. So that pretty much takes up the day. And actually, I feel like I'm working more than I did when I was driving into New York City. Maybe because the computers here and, you know, I'm kind of a little bit of a workaholic, you know, anyway. So, you know, the days go quick, but they also kind of drag on. It's a weird feeling. It's a feeling of contradictions, I think, in many ways. But yeah, so we've been kept very busy with this crisis.
The technology has been, you know, almost the unsung hero in all of this.
You know, yesterday, we had that first virtual city council here and everybody was present. So that's kind of unusual that every single member was present. And that's a benefit, I think, as well. Of course, meeting each other and being with each other, particularly in the Members Lounge, where you interact with the other members of the City Council, is oftentimes the place where you get a lot of business done. You know, you say, hey, can you support me on this? And I'll support you on that. So that physical interaction was beneficial to a lot of the council members. But yeah, now that things can be done, you know, over the internet or virtually, you know, it does change a lot of things. And it'll be interesting to see how we come out of this in the end. And, you know, I think the public liked what we did. I saw it on the news this morning, you know, and people were commenting, you know.
You mentioned one of the things that are greatly affecting your community or your district is food. What other challenges that are specific to your district?
So yeah, food is definitely a big one. And that's the one that we're kind of dealing with most this week. You know, a lot of the stores closed. A lot of the workers who work in the stores are sick. And many of them are immigrant community members. And so they can't get in and so the stores close down. But that food insecurity has created a whole host of problems. Just last week, the end of last week, I saw a food line 10 blocks long from 94th Street to 104th Street on 34th Avenue in Jackson Heights, of people just waiting to get a free bag of food from Catholic Charities. So that is a huge issue. I work with the Himalayan community, with the Tibetan and the Nepali community. And we are getting 300 boxes of food a week for them to distribute. And that food goes, 300 boxes of food goes in a half hour. So people are really needing food. I spoke with the Commissioner yesterday. They're going to be adding additional meals to the schools. You know, they, I have three schools here in the district where people can pick up three meals a day. But we run out and it's oftentimes more than 1,000 people at each school need those meals. So it's 3,000 meals at each school. So there's a very high demand. The other issues, I think, that have hit this community and that in some ways are particular to this community is the issue of housing. Where do people go after they've been to Elmhurst Hospital? So, you know, let's say they get admitted to Elmhurst, they have COVID, they get well enough to leave, but they're not back to normal. And so they need to go to a place where they can convalesce. And they have no place to go to convalesce because oftentimes the living conditions for many of these folks is such that they may be 22 people to a house. And that's not an unusual situation here. So there are occasions where some of these folks have tried to return home and the residents who also live there don't want them to come in because they're afraid that they will become ill if that person comes back into the household. And then there are other conditions where the person does come back to the household and gets other people sick. So we were fighting very hard and along with an organization called Addicar, which is a Nepali and Tibetan organization, to get hotel rooms for those who need to convalesce. And so I'm proud to say that the de Blasio administration finally got 11,000 hotel rooms for folks that find themselves in those positions. So of course, the other major concern is health care. You know, people in my community don't have access to insurance oftentimes. And so they use Elmhurst Hospital as if it was a doctor's office because they're undocumented, mostly these folks. And so that just clogs up Elmhurst Hospital. And then you get the long lines, et cetera, so forth and so on. Now, everyone is taken care of, you know, basically, but it is a problem for the system because that is the only place that undocumented folks can go to get medical care. So these inequities, which have existed for a while, have now become, as I said before, very, very clear. And there are issues that we can't just leave after COVID and say, oh, we're done. No, we have to continue to find a way to be able to service these communities long after COVID is over.
How is the immigrant and undocumented community taking the rhetoric of the President? If you have been able to hear any of their concerns about what's been said from the White House?
Well, gee, that, you know, is a very good issue. You know, the words that the White House has used, the anti-immigrant sentiment that the White House has pushed out there, the fact that they've stopped, quote unquote, immigration right now. The President sends the wrong signal to folks. These folks have been here. Those who are undocumented oftentimes have been here many, many years and have documented American-born children who are here with them. And some don't, but they have now DACA and things like that. So all it really does, when we hear that type of rhetoric from the White House and others, is push these immigrants further into the shadows. And that's not a good thing because, for example, if an undocumented person has been a victim of a crime and they're afraid to go to the authorities, well, that criminal is still going to be out there running around. We need undocumented folks to step forward. I think another thing that's really interesting that's happened because of the COVID crisis is that it's time that we reevaluate what we mean when we say essential workers. These immigrant folks, many of them undocumented, are the delivery people. They're the ones who are running the trains. They're the ones who are driving the buses. They're the ones who are picking the food. They're the, you know, the grocery store workers. And we rely on them, you know. And so what is essential? What does essential really mean? To me, these people, these folks who are working now, they're the essential workers. We need to pay them well, we need to give them health care, we need to give them retirement benefits, we really need to take care of them. And that has not been done in the past. So we need to put the anti-immigrant sentiment behind us. We need to, in my opinion, vote the man of the White House out. And we need to move forward with a progressive agenda, one that will be inclusive of everyone who lives in the United States.
Speaking of inclusivity, I know that you are a big advocate of the LGBTQ plus community. How do you say that that community in your district is handling this?
So it's been difficult for us in the LGBT community because we've been marginalized to begin with. And many of the LGBT people who live in my community are also immigrants, many Latinos, who come from countries where homosexuality is forbidden or actually, you know, you could be punishable or put in jail for. So they come here for asylum reasons. And of course, what they find here is a situation that's not too different sometimes than what they find in their own country. So for example, you know, we have a large transgender community here. But oftentimes, the transgender women in particular find opposition and are hurt or attacked on the streets, even here in Jackson Heights, which is a very tolerant and inclusive community. So their issues are unique also in the sense that they don't work. Many of them don't work. Many of them have to turn to sex work in order to survive. So if they're doing sex work, for example, then they can't do that while COVID is around because you can't risk getting COVID from that type of work. And so they don't have an income either. And there's very little resources to help the transgender community, particularly at a time like this. But even for LGB people, it's difficult, you know. So, and many of the same reasons that I elaborated on before. But, you know, it's just not been easy for us in the LGBT community. Our Pride Parade has been canceled in June, the one in Queens, all of them, actually, in every borough, has been canceled. And the big one in Manhattan, of course, that's been canceled. So, you know, it's a rotten shame. Along with the Puerto Rican Parade, that's been canceled. So then there's a lot of intersectionality, too. A lot of the LGBT people are Puerto Rican, they're Latino, they're South Asian. So, you know, we feel that as well here in the community, yeah.
How is everybody coming together to help combat everything that comes along with this pandemic?
So it is kind of amazing to see, especially in this culturally diverse community, how people are coming together. So I see a lot of people coming together, you know, on the internet and doing conferences like we're doing. I know that people, Jackson Heights is the neighborhood known for its friendliness as well. But people have reached out to support immigrant organizations by either sending funds or actually volunteering to help them and doing so in a safe way. You know, of course, wearing masks and being social, practicing social distancing so that they get out and they help with that. We had a street closure, which I liked a lot, on 34th Avenue between 73rd and 80th Street about three weeks ago, but the mayor has since ended it. But it gave us an opportunity to at least pass our neighbors and say hello and know that they're doing fairly well. So those are some of the things I think that we're continuing to do. I had a friend, an Irish friend from Ireland, who died of COVID. He was one of the early victims. And we were able to hold a Zoom funeral for him. And even people from Ireland were able to attend. And so maybe in the past, they wouldn't have been able to fly over to the United States, but at least we were able to get together that way. Because, you know, you can't get a funeral to even pick up the bodies of the people who have died in the hospitals. There's a long waiting list to get somebody picked up from the hospital. So, but Jackson Heights is a cohesive community in that sense. They welcome the Pride Parade, you know, we have a Pride Parade for the Colombian community. We have a Pride Parade, we have a parade for Colombian, Ecuadorian, Bolivian. I'm leaving somebody out here, but about seven or eight parades a year. Those are all now probably going to be canceled. But we'll get through it and we'll have even bigger and better ones as we move into the future.
Have you been able to go out into the community and talk to people?
Yeah, I haven't been able to do it too much. I fall into a category, I'm 64 years old, I have diabetes, I have some immune deficiency issues. I take medication that lowers my immune system for psoriasis, actually. So it limits me. I did go over to Elmhurst Hospital on two occasions to see what was going on, a little bit from a distance, not into the hospital itself, but to see the lines that were going on, the lines that were forming over there for care and to do an interview as well. And I've been out to, like I said, 34th Avenue when we had the street closures, which is very interesting. But I have to be careful also and practice the social distancing. So like, it's amazing to me, like even with a mask on my face and a hat on my head and sunglasses, people will come up and they'll say, oh, Councilmember, how are you? I'm like, how did you even know it was me? Because I was like so incognito, you know? I don't know. But even in the grocery store, you know, people are coming over to say hello. So I still get a feel for what's happening in the community. But of course, I can't really be out there. And to be honest with you, sometimes I feel a little guilty that I can't be out there like some of the frontline workers. I know what they're doing is serving our country and our community. You know, and it's really incredible that they're willing to do that. But some of us just can't be out like frontline like that. So I do a lot of these video conferences and a lot of phone calls, you know, that type of thing to make up for.
In times like these, how does the City Council go about its business of functioning?
Well, that's a great question and it's a question that we're really going to have to confront moving forward. You know, I'm Chair of the Finance Committee of the City Council. So I have a lot of responsibility in terms of trying to balance the budget and to come out with a budget that protects the safety net of people, especially the people in my community that depend on that safety net. The mayor has made proposals to cut some of youth program, to close the schools, to close beaches, to close pools in order to, you know, have some budget savings. I don't think we're going to be able to have the summer youth employment program like it was in the past, but we do need to have some way to engage youth because we just can't not have anything for youth to do over the summer once school is officially out. You know, some of them, many youth are not even attending the remote learning classes at this point. Some of them are skipping that. So, you know, we need to think creatively how we're going to be able to do that. Councilmember and Majority Leader Lori Combo, she's come up with a few ideas of being able to place these kids somewhere. And that's the other issue. Even if we were to have the summer youth employment program, where would these youth work? So we have to figure out creatively how that would happen as well. So, but then I have the whole other part of the budget, education. They cut out $100 million in fair student funding. That's aid that goes directly to schools to help principals with programming. We need to look at that very, very carefully. You know, there are cuts to all different, all the agencies in the city, our aging community, cuts in transportation money, cuts in the half price subway metro fare, the fare, the fare fares program. So as we walk through the budget process, these are things that we're going to have to negotiate with the mayor. What is our, what are our priorities moving forward? So the Speaker, Corey Johnson, and I are fond of saying, we're going to make sure that that safety net that provides the help that low-income communities of color need, those are going to be the things that guide us moving forward because they are the people, they're the folks with the least amount right now and that's who we need to protect. Others will be able to get along, but we need to protect that social safety net.
So I know, I know it's really early in the game and you've mentioned many things that are going to have to be addressed as a part of the aftermath of this. And from what it looks like, this is, this is going to stick with us for a while. But you mentioned education and the virtual learning. There's been a lot of criticism about the Department of Education. And I know that this has been, and it's an unprecedented time, you know, and not having the materials ready for virtual learning. What are, what are some of the things that you feel, as, you know, a committee member on education, what are some of the things that you feel like we can learn from this going forward and, you know, be able to address along the way while, you know, while this is, when this is over?
Well, a good example of what it is that you're talking about is just the use of iPads. So when I was the Chair of the Education Committee from 16 up until, I guess it was 19, or for four years anyway, we were fighting to get iPads for students. But we weren't allowed to purchase them because of a controller directive that said we couldn't use capital dollars to purchase iPads. Now imagine if we had been able to purchase these iPads going back before the crisis. Most children would have been accommodated. But because we weren't allowed to use capital dollars for that, we didn't buy them. Now we know the value of them. And we certainly see that, you know, they may be about 100 or so thousand. iPads have been purchased and distributed to students, but we needed over 300,000 to accommodate students. So those 200,000 students who don't have the iPads and who need them are not getting even the remote learning. So, and many of those are students who live in homeless shelters and are at the very low bottom of the poverty level. And the ones who need the help the most. So I think one of the lessons that we've learned is like, we need to think through these things. You know, the main way of communicating today has been through, you know, e-electronics and virtual learning and learning on computers and stuff. Had we had the foresight back then, which I was a proponent of, which I fought for, we would have been equipped better for this financial crisis. So we need to continue, continue to think of other ways, too, that should something like this happen again, how will we be prepared for it? So not just with school, but with everything. I happened to be an educator first, that's what got me involved in politics. So, you know, that's what I think of first, how can we help our students? So there are other examples like that, too.
What would you say the relationship between city government and state government and federal government, how is that going in your eyes?
That's a great question. You know, Mayor de Blasio and Governor Cuomo always have their little battles going on. And then, of course, the President is so unpredictable. But it does seem that the governor may have made some progress. When he went down to Washington, I think it was on Tuesday with the President. But you don't know. I mean, that's the thing is that, you know, President Trump says he's going to help us and then turns around and doesn't help us. So I don't know. But the city is at least $7 billion in the hole because of a hit we're taking in revenue because of COVID. So we desperately need funding from the state and/or from the feds, most likely from the feds. If we don't get that, that hit, that budget gap is going to cause us to take some other drastic actions and possibly layoffs if we don't get that. So that is something that I'm very worried about going through the budget negotiation process. Right now, we are not getting that aid from Washington. We have gotten $1.3 billion for COVID help. So if it's for a hospital, if it's for gowns, if it's for masks, if it's COVID related, it's covered. But we've gotten no direct aid to the cities for the expenses that we have incurred with things like food production for, you know, the schools, anything like that. We have not gotten any help and we desperately need that. The governor's on board, is fighting with us on that. But then again, he has asked me, the city, to take some Medicaid cuts and some education cuts as well, even before this happened, when the state come up with their budget. So New York is looking for money, we need money desperately. And without those dollars, we're going to have a very rough time for the next few years.
Yeah. And what about, how would you say, you know, your colleagues, the relationship between, you know, the State Assembly and, the State Assembly, yeah, the State Assembly and the State Senate?
Well, I think that we have a good relationship. We have a relationship, we have elected officials here. Jessica Ramos is the State Senator, Catalina Cruz is our Assemblywoman, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez is our Congresswoman. And I think all of us have a goal, you know, which is to, you know, help the community and get as much money back to the community as we possibly can. And we're politically similarly aligned in the sense of the way that we think. And we're politically similarly aligned in the sense of the way that we think. So my relationships with those folks are pretty good. But, you know, I was fortunate when I first got involved in politics. I started more in Eastern Queens and have, you know, gotten heavily involved and elected in Western Queens. So I have relationships, good relationships with most of my colleagues in government. And that has been beneficial to me and to the community as well. Because, you know, they understand my needs, I understand their needs, and we work together on those things. So so far, so good.
As a member of the Finance Committee, what is it that the public should understand about a call for rent freezes that maybe is not being articulated or being expressed in a specific way?
Sure. So, look, there are many people who cannot pay the rent. We know that rent was due on April first. Most, a lot of people were not able to pay their rent. So they were given a three-month extension without, you know, with no threat of eviction. The City Council has now put forward some legislation that will extend that. And I believe it will extend it another six months. But then the issue becomes, what happens after those nine months? Are people going to be expected to pay their rent? And most likely, they are going to be expected to pay the rent. But how are they going to do that when, you know, they've had no income for the last nine months? So there are several ideas being floated about that, you know, would help folks either through direct payments to them. You know, when we had nine eleven, property owners were able to get a four hundred dollar rebate after the income tax was increased. After nine eleven, the City Council at that time increased property taxes. I think it was either seventeen or eighteen percent. So folks had to pay that, but folks were working. It's a very different situation now because they're not working. But eventually, they did get a rebate of about four hundred dollars. And that went on for a number of years to make up for it. But ultimately, in my opinion, we need to have some type of a rent freeze. And the Rent Guidelines Board can enact that immediately. They could say, you know, no increases in rent moving forward until such and such a time. And then I think we need to look at things, maybe possibly giving some type of an abatement to landlords in terms of their taxes. But it would have to be then passed along to their tenants. So that's something I'm thinking about doing. But to benefit the tenants, not the landlord. I think that's crucial here. So there are a couple of ideas floating around about how we're going to do that. But it's recognized as a very important issue within the council.
So if you had, if it was all up to you and all up to you alone, you can just, you know, make the call and this would be the plan of action to go ahead to to address the rent freezes and everything, what would, you know, what would you do?
That's a good question. I think I would definitely go through with some type of a benefit abatement or freeze on the tax, on the rent payments. It's a complicated question because as a Chair of the Finance Committee, the city relies heavily on those income taxes and the real estate taxes that come in. So anything that we propose also means kind of in some ways a reduction in the money or the revenue that the city gets. So I have, to be honest with you, figured that all out. Because how do we maintain services but at the same time give people some cuts? So, I mean, it's a very difficult question. I wish I had a magic wand and I could just say, you know, let's cure all this and let's go back to where we were before COVID. But it's not possible. So I think as we move through to the end, our ideas will become crystallized and hopefully folks who need this type of help will get some help along the way.
So with hysteria being, you know, very prevalent, there's also a lot of misinformation that is being circulated around, especially on social media and just the internet in general. What are your thoughts on this dissemination of misinformation?
Well, people need to be careful because there are those who are out there who would take advantage of people during this time. And so whether that's in the form of misinformation or giving you wrong information, telling you things that are not true that's happening in the community, you know, you have to be careful. The other night, we had helicopters flying around Jackson Heights. And all types of rumors went out throughout the community. And I was like, on Twitter at two in the morning, saying, calm down, we'll figure out what it is, you know, within the next couple of days. So when I got ahold of the NYPD, what they were doing was they were searching for potential burglaries because we've seen an increase in the neighborhood with commercial burglaries because the stores are empty. And these crooks, they know that they're empty and they're taking advantage of the situation that people are not around to break into these stores and rob them. So that's what it was really about. But you can see how the rumors would circulate. Oh, you know, the military is coming in, they're taking over, they're moving bodies or whatever. But none of that was true. What it was is an NYPD anti-crime measure to protect the community. So, you know, be careful of those rumors. There are many others out there, particularly for seniors. They have to be careful. People call up and say, if you don't pay this amount of money, we're going to turn off your electric. You know, things like that. It's just really horrible, especially for older folks. So just be careful.
Is there anything that you wanted to say that was not brought up? Or is there anything that you want to conclude with?
Sure, I think that, you know, Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, my district, but all of New York City, we are a great, great town. You know, the song says, if you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. And that's true. And when we get back to the day in Jackson Heights, Elmhurst and New York City, where we can be out in the streets, talking to each other, we will have gotten through this COVID crisis together and we will unite again as a community. There's hope, there's love and there's concern. So stay strong and stay home and stay safe.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Drumpf, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. It's really enjoyable.